Calling to order the Schenectady City Council meeting for Monday, March 13th, 2023. We have one public hearing this evening. If the clerk would please read.
Public hearing one, amending section 186-16 of the Schenectady City Code regarding smoking in city parks.
We have seven items for original consideration. If the clerk would please read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration, an ordinance to amend chapter 161-21 of the Code of the City of Schenectady.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution amending resolution 2022-214 to modify the organizations and the description for allocated project, healthy and equitable food access for all Schenectady residents.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number five, excuse me, item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 13 Odell Street for $15,000.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 2315 Van Vranken Avenue for $60,000.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution honoring the John F. Kennedy, Division One of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, together with John F. Kennedy, Division One of the Ladies' Ancient Order of Hibernians, and all people of Irish descent in Schenectady on the Feast of St. Patrick's, March 17th.
This item would be taken out of order and presented by Councilmember Patrick. Item number six.
Item number six, under contract and supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for the Pine Baron stump removal to Moy Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $52,395.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, under contract and supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course, cart, barn, electrical service, and upgrades to Amber Heritage Electric LLC in the amount of $65,300.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, March 13th, 2023. We have no one here to do the invocation tonight, so I just ask us to all stand a moment in silence. Keeping in mind all those who are going through difficulties today and every day. Thank you. I'd like to call on Dave Connolly to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would please complete the roll call.
Mr. Mutavirin is absent. Mr. Toro?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palmeni?
Here.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here. Item number five, a resolution honoring the John F. Kennedy, Division One of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, together with John F. Kennedy, Division One of the Ladies' Order of Hibernians, and all people of Irish descent in Schenectady on the Feast of St. Patrick. I'd like to call on Councilmember Patrick to present this resolution.
Madam President may have the floor.
We have the floor.
Thank you. Would you all like to come up here, please? Hello, how are you? Good, thank you. Manu? Hi, everyone. Okay. Now, I have to say, I graduated from St. Patrick's High School in Watertown, Massachusetts, and of course, my last name is Patrick, although that's my married name, I have to be honest with you about that. So it gives me a lot of pleasure to be able to present this resolution to you this evening. A resolution honoring the John F. Kennedy, Division One of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, together with the John F. Kennedy, Division One of the Ladies' Ancient Order of Hibernians, and all people of Irish descent throughout the City of Schenectady on the occasion of the Feast of St. Patrick, March 17th. Whereas St. Patrick's Day is the feast day of St. Patrick, patron saint of Ireland. He was born in Roman Britain in the late 4th century. He was kidnapped at the age of 16 and was taken to Ireland as a slave. He escaped but returned about 432 CE to convert the Irish to Christianity. By the time of his death on March 17, 461, he had established monasteries, churches, and schools. And whereas the City of Schenectady honors its many Irish residents and residents of Irish descent, as well as for their many contributions to the City of Schenectady, and whereas the John F. Kennedy, Division One Ancient Order of Hibernians, together with the John F. Kennedy, Division One Ladies' Ancient Order of Hibernians, has contributed to the general welfare of the City of Schenectady for over 143 years and 129 years respectively, by its many financial donations and the performance of various good works for worthy causes and deserving organizations. And whereas today, people of all backgrounds celebrate, come on over here, if you'd like, celebrate, what's my place here? Yes, celebrate St. Patrick's Day, especially throughout the United States, Canada, and Australia. Although North America is home to the largest celebrations, St. Patrick's Day is celebrated around the world in locations far from Ireland, including Japan, Singapore, and Russia. And whereas popular St. Patrick's Day recipes include Irish soda bread, corned beef and cabbage, and even beer is sometimes dyed green to celebrate the day, in the United States, people often wear green on St. Patrick's Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy declare that March 17th, 2023, St. Patrick's Day shall be celebrated throughout the City of Schenectady in recognition of the many contributions and good works of Irish-American people everywhere. I'd like to move this. I need a second, please. Second by Mr. Farley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Congratulations.
We'd just like to invite everyone to join us at the Ancient Order of Hibernians on 1746 State Street from 12 noon till whenever on Friday, March 17th. So, hope you can, anybody's welcome, whether you're Irish or not.
Sounds great. Would you like to say something? Anybody? Dave? Okay, we'll just, I'll take this back, I'll take some pictures. We'll be having dancers tonight?
Yes.
Okay. The dancers. No? Yes? I don't know how much room they have, though. Okay, great. And it's, so we're very pleased to have with us tonight, that's Abby. Abby from the Farrell School of Irish Ants, who's going to celebrate St. Patrick's Day for us with a performance. Thank you. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
We have one public hearing tonight. Public hearing number one, amending section 186-16 of the Schenectady City Code regarding smoking in city parks. I have no one sign up to speak, so I declare this public hearing closed. At this time, I ask for approval of the minutes of February 24th, 2023, and February 27th, 2023. Moved by Mr. Williams? Second by Ms. Farley. All those in favor? Ask the clerk to please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, March 13th, 2023. Under official, we have none. Under general, from Nils Hedlund of the American Legion Post 1485, a thank you letter for funds donated. From Haley Vicaro, an email requesting additional garbage bins, including recycling bins, for the neighborhoods rather than removing existing bins. From Teresa Zubretzky of the Capital District Tobacco-Free Communities, a letter in support of amending section 186-16 of the City Code regarding fires and smoking in city parks to prohibit smoking and vaping of both tobacco and cannabis on city property. From Rosa Randall, an online submittal in support of the ban of smoking cannabis in city parks. Under petitions, we have none.
Thank you. This time, any committee reports from the council members? We'll have privilege of the floor on the legislative agenda. I have no one signed up to speak, so I declare this public comment period closed. Ask for approval of the legislative agenda. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Patrick. All those in favor? Aye. This time, we have privilege of the floor regarding general city business. I have two people signed up to speak. Diablo Montolongo?
I'm going to talk about Carl Olson and his Schenectady prostitutes. Look, Carl Olson, former Schenectady Commissioner of General Service, he got arrested because he wanted to fuck a prostitute.
Excuse me, your language?
And Donald Trump, he too, he got in trouble for the same reasons. And the former New York State Governor, Eliot Pitzer, he lost everything because he wanted to hook up with a prostitute. The reason I came here to make this comment is because the men that got arrested that night along with Olson, they're all over 50. So the question is, what made these men go out and look for these women? And the reason and the answer is very simple, recreation, sex recreation. But let me ask you, Madam Porterfield, a direct question. What is more harmful, legal marijuana or having a date with a prostitute? I know you don't remember this, but about 15 years ago, two Schenectady prostitutes come here and ask you to tear down the walls. They stopped them from making a living, a profit, to support their families. That's why I wanted to propose you to tear down the walls and allow these women to work. Because there is only, they had childrens. And also open the door for bikini bars, for topless bars, for pole dancing bars. Because Schenectady is not Schenectady anymore. And if you read the Bible, Genesis, you will see that God created women so Adam can have sex.
Thank you. Edmund Laven, Jr.?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been in front of City Hall with this sign for about a year and a half now.
Okay, your sign can't block the audience, so, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you saw me the first day I was out there with the other sign that said he stole 750 for my default judgment. I would like to know how to personally know it, why you had not come to me and find out what's going on. Your mayor is City Hall.
Sir, during the council meeting, you have to address your comments to the chair. During the council meeting, you have to address your comments to the chair.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. You have to address your comments to the chair. Chair, I'd like to know why the mayor, you saw me my first day, as I come to speak to you, to find out what's going on. I used to pride my civil rights by three judges. Judge Falatiko brought in a motion without affidavit of service. That's not served correctly. I called the city clerk's office and said, what is this, some kind of scam? Instead of asking you what the case number and the document number was, he asked what the name was. He pulled me into court without affidavit of service and he made a judgment to vacate my default judgment without asking her why she didn't appear for the first hearing, which he must give a reason to have and prove an insert program, which I did. And he vacated my default judgment on that day, 9/10. The hearing was 9/21. Kind of hard to make a judgment before you hear any evidence. And I filed 15 motions, orders to show cause, 13 of them were denied by Falatiko, who must accuse himself. Tanika Frost signed two motions. The city clerk's office waited off the first one that said affidavit of service needed. She signed the second one. That's what I was serving. She denied my motion. Hoffman denied my motion. That's conspiracy to deprive me of my civil rights and due process. I would like to know what this council is going to do about that, since no one else in the county seems to care. They work for you. You're supposed to represent the people. And I would like you to watch me on YouTube because that'll tell you just about everything that's out. Do you want to answer?
That's not-
Someone could look into it?
Sir, let me just tell you, that's not how this forum works, but it sounds like you have a court case and you would need to deal with the judicial system.
I'm sorry, I can't-
I can speak with you afterwards if you can't hear me from here. I can speak to you after the meeting. Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment of city business closed. Miscellaneous business of the council? No one? Okay. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Based on the national weather, sir-
Thank you, Madam President. Based on the National Weather Service forecast, I've issued a declaration of state of emergency to coincide with one issued by the Schenectady County Manager effective at 10:00 PM tonight, running through 5:00 PM tomorrow night. Again, due to a major weather event, including the prediction of heavy snow falling, drifting, and icy road conditions. This situation threatens the public safety. No unnecessary driving shall occur in the city during this period. Garbage collection will be suspended. Garbage collection scheduled for March 14th. District 3 in Mount Pleasant and Bellevue will be collected on Saturday, March 18th. Again, I've advised that people remove their vehicles from the city streets to allow for efficient snow removal. Appreciate individuals' cooperation with that and again, that people should, it's going to be heavy wet snow. Be cognizant of overstraining yourself in terms of shoveling snow. Ask people to clear their sidewalks and to, again, for fire hydrants, one shovel on each side of the fire hydrant. Provide access in the event that the fire department had to utilize the hydrant. Now, we'll get through this and spring is just a few more days down the road. Thank you, Madam President. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. I just want to congratulate the Legacy Cafe at City Mission for their grand opening and also Charles Birch for the expansion of their business on Albany Street. Congratulations to both for, and thank you for the work that you are doing in the city of Schenectady. If there's nothing else to come before us, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Farley, second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Have a good evening.